You all set? Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the West Bridgewater Board of Selectmen meeting. Today is Wednesday, December 6th. If you would, please stand and join us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you and welcome. Tonight with us, we have the Board of Assessors. Paul, what are you doing way back there?
Just, I was here early. It's that year.
All right, welcome, Board. I will turn it over to you for your presentation.
Thank you.
Motion open here.
No, motion to reopen.
To reopen here.
Those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, gentlemen. So, we're here before you tonight regarding the setting of the FY '18 tax rates, residential, commercial, industrial, commercial, and personal property. John, the Principal Assessor, has been good enough. He works closely with Patriot, our vendor that does all the work for the town or some of the work, and also with the Department of Revenue, Bureau Local Services, that oversees, you know, what assessors do, how they do it, and approves everything that we do regarding values. So, John was good enough as every year. We make a booklet, it's probably about a presentation, just so we can kind of walk through it. Because a lot of the stuff, you know, even that somebody's been doing along town like myself, sometimes can be confusing. So, by going through the booklet, we'll give you an idea of, you know, what the evaluations have done and, you know, how you might want to decide on what rate you're going to split at, okay? Okay, so you've got the cover page and the second page in. It's just, it talks about the purpose of tonight's meeting. Every year, the, on the pie chart, I guess it's what, the third page or whatever, the pie chart, I like to address because, you know, you look at that and go, geez, that looks, that looks pretty and this and that. But it really has some relevance here tonight. With, here in West Bridgewater, we're very fortunate because I look at it that we have, basically, with the commercial, industrial, commercial, industrial, and residential properties, we have less than 3,000 taxable parcels, right below 3,000 parcels. Then there's some personal property accounts. But of our 3,000 parcels, a little bit less, almost, oh, there's about, on the value and parcel count, it's a little over 27% that makes up our commercial, industrial base. And for us here in town and for the taxpayers, that's a good thing. The Department of Revenue says, as a weight or a cutoff, that before you decide to split your rate, you should be at a minimum for your commercial, industrial properties in about 22% of your base. So, the pie chart, if you look at it, shows that the commercial, industrial is 16, 1, 11, 3, is a little over 27%. That affords a nice little town here, the ability to have you guys, you know, come in tonight, talk to us, and set split rates where the residential rate is, you know, is one thing and the commercial will bear a higher portion of the total dollars raised because you decide to classify. We can classify as we're doing because of the makeup of the town. I find it remarkable that in our small town, we have, you know, the good industrial park, like I've talked about, the infrastructure, the Route 24, you know, adjacent to that and everything else that goes along with it, that we have a good commercial, industrial base and that we can classify. Most of towns around here, eastern, the Bridgewater's, their base, like I've said before, I haven't checked it this year, but they were well below 20%. Millball, for some reason, I talked to the gal down there, they have classified at 1%. I haven't gotten a straight answer why they bother to go through that. But for some reason, they go through the due diligence of actually splitting the rate out by a couple pennies difference. Not sure why, but I don't think it's worth the trouble. The next page, after the pie chart, it gives the property class, it gives valuations by property class. And if you would, at the top part of the page, gentlemen, you can look at the last two columns, 2017, fiscal year 2017, and the year that we're in now, 2018. And if you look at the, what I like to look at here in our town is that the last blue stripe in the middle of the page, in 2017, the total value of West Bridgewater, last year was $1,093. And for '18, it's gone up considerably, you know, we've had some increase in values and such and plus growth, it's gone up to $1,162. You know, it wasn't that long ago, you look at that chart, back in 2013, it was well below $1 billion. So, you can see our community is heading in the right direction for a lot of different reasons. The, on the top of that, on the, if you would, on the top of those lines there, Class 1 residential is the first line. You just, you can look at what the values have done from '17 to '18 by class. Residential from 742, you know, a million up to 797. The commercial didn't go up that much and the industrial didn't go up that much. You know, so, we've had a little influx, but the majority of that increase was with the residential properties. Probably attributable to, you know, the way the real estate market is now. Something I do want to point out for the people too in the audience is that we're talking about here a value for FY '18 of 1,117. You know, January 1st, '17, not today's values because the market, I think, I've been following the sales in the community, in other communities, you know, days on market and such. When you look at the real estate information, it says that we're pretty viable. You put your start home out on the market, it's gone in 24 days, you know, et cetera, et cetera. So, I would expect, you know, over the next couple of years, a good, a good jump in the residential valuations. The, the next page, if you turn it sideways, landscape view, it shows the blue, the pink, and the yellow highlighted areas. And what those are, the three areas are residential, commercial, and as they say, industrial by each fiscal year. The, if you look up at the blue, blue shaded area, gentlemen, for '17 and '18, the second line down, the residential parcel count, and then on each, in each shaded area, the second line down is the parcel count. The residential properties, you know, we lose some, we gain some with the residence subdivisions, they went up by 22. This, this chart here does not include mixed use or apartment houses. This is just single-family homes, okay? The commercial parcel count just went up by one, same as the industrial. If you look down in the blue shaded area, the bottom line for FY '17, you can see last year's average value of $304,000. And then you go to FY '18, which we'll be, we'll be talking about in a second. FY '18, the average residential value is 326.3, 324, okay? So, it shows about a seven, a little over 7% increase. And the line above that, it gives you the average bill for each of these years. '17, if you would, it's the next last line on the blue shade, FY '17, 53.97. And if you, the average bill, John, is that, is that the 1, 3, is that last year's split? The 5, 6, 7, 4, the '18 rate residential?
That would be, that would be the average tax.
Okay.
If it was adopted at 1.35.
Okay, yeah. That, the average, the average for the '18 rate, gentlemen, is at last year's, what you, what you, what you voted on for last year's split of 1.35. So, each of these charts, and, you know, we can go through them. I'd be glad to answer any questions. They just give you a breakdown. It shows that, you know, the average value's gone up a little bit. The total values have gone up and from what I can see, the community's moving in the right direction. If you would, I just want to, if I could take two seconds. You know, this, like I said, John put all this together before we move on. And I just want to take a second to say that, you know, back at town meeting in, was it June, yeah, we, I think it was, I forget, we made the Principal Assessor full-time. And, you know, like you've heard me tell and tell for the last 87 years, I do this for a living. So, I'm qualified to give my judgment on what the guy is doing, what the office is doing, how I think your classification's going. And it's all good, good. Since John has been on full-time, he's been to court for the, for the town of West Bridgewater a couple times and prevailed. He assisted me greatly. We adjudicated without any change in value of tax dollars on a large commercial piece of over $35 million for the three years at no change. John was, gave great assistance there. He's working on different stuff and, and we've had some distractions downstairs. You probably saw in the paper recently, the Attorney General found we were cited for a potential open meeting law violation and the EAG found that there was no violation. Those type of things, you know, we've dealt with. But John's moving forward in a positive man. I think he's doing a great job. I can't hand you a cash register receipt to say how much he saved the town, but I guarantee you that the town is reaping the benefit there, okay? Thanks for that little sideshow. We can move on. The next, the next couple of pages, or the next page anyways, you have the three shaded areas again, the blue, the middle pink commercial, the blue's residential, the pink is commercial, and the yellow is industrial. And what this does, if you look at the very top corner of the page in the blue, it has the average value for fiscal year '18 for residential properties of 326, 324. Then, if you look down to the bottom of that blue section, you'll see last year's information as far as the average tax bill. We looked at that before, the average bill was about 306. The bill at the 1.35 was 53.97. What this does, the gray area lets you say, okay, and I'll just go as an example. This is for the FY '18, what if, FY '18, what if scenario that you guys are dealing with tonight, that in the blue section residential, with the average value of 326, 324, if you adopt the same rate as last year, and again, that's up to you, at 1.35, the average bill on that assessment of 326, the average bill, if you look down at the 1.35, the average bill would go to 56.74. And the tax rate would go to 17.39, a little, a little dollar would increase. And the dollar change would be about $277 or a 5% change. So, what we've done, or what John has done in this, in these columns is we've taken the average assessed value for that particular classification, residential, commercial, industrial, and we've said, times the various rates at the classified splits and then we've pitted them against last year's average bill. So, it gives you an idea. Just to look at this, if you look at the average assessment of 326, to get it right near last year's dollars of 53.97, you would have to go down to 1.4, 1.45, the, on the split. I'm just, I'm just, I'm just telling you, you know, how this works where last year's dollars for '17 was 53.97. To make the dollars very close with the increased value for '18, you'd have to split at 1.45 or roughly a tax bill of 53.64. So, the residential tax bill would go down 32, almost 33 bucks. At that split of 1.45, the CI would go up a little over 2,000 and the industrial about 1,700. So, you have in front of you, and then we have the cheating pages coming up where you can look to see, it kind of explains this. You have in front of you what you might want to, you know, consider about, where you want to split and the influence of that split will have on the individual classes. If you, if you turn the page, it makes it easier, you know, to understand this. A little past halfway down, again, last year you split at 1.35. It just shows the numbers we just talked about a second ago. Last year's assessment, 304, times 17.73, realized a bill of 53.97. This year, the average bill of 326, 324. The rate would come down to 17.39. But the bill, because the values went up, like except 30, the values went up about 5%, the bill would go up about $277. One thing I do want to point out, I talked to John about, if you will, please, on the last column of the cheat sheet here, all right? It says, the last column, the title is increase per quarter, okay? What you want, what you want to be careful of, and it is actually an annual increase divided by four quarters, but effectively it's not because the town of West Bridgewater, like any other community in Commonwealth, when you, when you have quarterly billing, the first two bills that, you know, before the third quarter, the first and second quarters, July and October 1st, they're estimated bills based on 1/4 of the previous year dollars. Because when those bills are sent out, we haven't set a tax rate. So, they, you know, if your tax bill was 4,000, the first quarter bill would be 1,000, the second quarter bill would be 1,000. So, actually, on any increase based on what we do tonight, the increase for the, for the FY '18, at that, at that split, the increase of the 2.77 would really go in the third and fourth quarter. So, even though it is 69 bucks a quarter, the actual, to the taxpayer, it shows on the third and fourth quarter bill because that's just the way it is. That's not our doing, that's just the way the Commonwealth sets it up with the quarterly billing. So, if you go through the splits, the cheat sheets, it has the proposed splits for residential, and then it moves on to the commercial and moves on to the industrial. And, you know, again, like every year when I talk to you guys, I'm the same way. I throw a lot of stuff at you, you know, we do it for a living here, but there's a lot of stuff that goes into this. You try to do the best job you can for the voters and such and do what you can. At least we are, like I said at the, at the start of my deliberation, that we're fortunate enough that we can classify. East Bridgewater's rate, they're not classified. The community is similar to ours, but doesn't have the same infrastructure. Their single rate, because they're not classified, is about, last year was like 1,850 or something. They were almost a buck more than us. So, that's what we would be if we didn't have that, that good commercial base. I'd be glad to answer any questions that you might have.
At a 1.38 split, it would still, I know for a number of years, we were trying to bring them a little bit closer to help out the commercial and industry. And as the economy changes and the real estate residential market's going up, we're seeing just the opposite with the commercial and industrial. So, maybe this is a time where we spread the split a little bit more, would still give a savings percentage-wise to all categories.
Well, it would be at 1.38, Jerry, you know, talking, because you mentioned that, the average bill would be 55.80. So, it would go up, if you look over in the 1, 2, 3, in the fourth line, the fourth column, it would go up like 180, 182 bucks.
Right, but still keeping commercial, industrial still pretty well.
It keeps everything's, yes, right, I know what you mean, yeah. I mean, unfortunately, with, with the real estate taxes, you know, everything has to move based on the, you know, and under the constraints of 2.5, my hands are tied, really, you know. You have to classify and, you know, you've got to do it a certain way and that's what has to be done.
Yeah, we have to keep it in our mind too, when those valuation go up, that's the multiplier and those houses are going to pay that much more. But as I look out in the audience, I have some people out there that own businesses and also own residential, you know, so they get hit, they get hit on both sides.
Right.
This was it, and I, I looked at it today.
It's tough, Ellen, yeah.
Kind of obvious that to stand at the 1.35, it'll show a 5.14, which is too much of an increase.
Yeah.
I think, I mean, but somewhere in between that and the, and the 1.4, 1.45 is where we lie, you know, it's up to the board. But the only thing is, we, we don't want to wipe the business and we don't, it's somewhere in between probably, like Jerry is, or maybe that's where we should be. It's hard to set this thing, but we try to be fair to both sides. And we've been trying to give the, the business a break, but the way that things are going there, and then now the residential, as you said, the pie, they're the biggest and a lot of those people are on fixed incomes and they can't, they can't take anymore, so.
I understand that, yeah.
That puts us in a one hell of a dilemma here.
Yeah.
Well, and I think the 1.38, 39, 40 range really gives the least impact.
Well, I agree with you.
To all categories.
I'm in that, in that same.
And again, I know, you know, going back to when Matt Albany's was on, we were trying to bring them a little bit together, but that's because the residential evaluations had really gone down.
It depends on what market you're sitting in. Right now, it's, it's, there's a huge appreciation out there, you know.
But, you know, well, in the commercial and industrial, it's not as much, it's not an increase, it's showing a lot of decreases. So, we have a little, a little wiggle room where we wouldn't be slamming or hurting the industrial and commercial and still helping residential rate.
I'd argue the exact opposite. I think this is an economic climate where we want to push more on the residential than the commercial and industrial. It's in the recession times where you want to push it on to the commercial. So, I think now's the time that we either leave it or decrease the CIP shift from commercial to residential. So, I'd, I'd say leave it. I mean, commercial isn't just Lowe's and CVS, it's also small businesses, barber shops. I think one thing we should consider for future years is maybe a small business reduction. I don't know if, do you have experience with that, Steve?
Yeah, we.
Looked into it.
Yeah, the, the commercial exemption, and I gave a presentation a number of years ago. It, it's my experience, I've, I've looked into it and dealt with it. And it's, anybody assessed them to a million dollars and it's almost like a TIF that we have one, there's so many things that go into it and you really, there's a check and balance there. There's a lot that goes into it and I don't know if our office is staff for it, maybe we are, maybe we aren't. I recommended that we didn't do that. And if you look online, I believe last time I checked, out of eight, 351 communities in the Commonwealth, I think six of them, five of them had that, you know, maybe came, which of course, Kenyatta has everything, the commercial, the commercial exemption. Some communities have residential exemption, the more wealthy ones, but they get kind of tricky. But on the commercial one, it, there's a lot that goes into that that the town has to deal with, keeping up the check and balance, you know, that's all.
All right, thank you. So, we're already putting a lot on commercial and industrial. If you look at what, if it were completely even, commercial average bill would be 19,000 and right now it's 26 and 1/2.
I agree. I mean, obviously, we, you know, we endorse the split because it does put more on the commercial, but they reap the benefits of the convenience of Route 24 and the industrial park and the proximity to Providence and Boston and Cape Cod and, which is why it allows us to do it. My only thought is going with a split somewhere around 1.38. It's, it's pretty level across the field with the exception it gives a good discount to residents. And it doesn't really, it's a minimal increase, no increase to industrial, smaller to commercial.
Yeah, from 1.35 to 1.38 on the residential, it's about, what, $95 difference? 2.77 down to 1.82.
And I think the thing is, when the real estate market values were crashing, we were able to take a little bit off the, add a little bit more on to residents because they didn't see an increase in that thing because of the decrease in their value, in their evaluation. Now, we're seeing just the opposite with the industrials dropping in value.
And that's fortunate, where the market works, you have time to kind of catch up with that because when it drops, it goes up, it's usually for a substantial time. It's all like one year this, one year that, it'll go in cycles, you know? And right now, we're heading, we're trending up in a, you see days on market and everything else. Nothing's sitting out there for more than 30 days. And I, you know, I do, I look at commercial rents and stuff, they're, they're increasing too. You know, you don't see it here in these figures, a lot of that stuff doesn't move. We don't have that many parcels like that. But I very well know that in dealing with some of the stuff that, you know, their, their vacancies have gone down and the commercial rents in some cases have increased on the more affluent properties, if you will.
Right. Did your board vote a recommendation?
No.
Okay. Does the board have any other questions before we open it up? David?
I do not.
Denise?
Denise Fries, Columbus Avenue. First, I want to thank this board, you're always very welcoming for the residents to come in and ask questions. So, we do appreciate your time and efforts and that you're very cordial too. I heard Mr. McCarthy say that the average tax bill was going to go up, uh, I'm sorry, the average assessment went up by 5%, but the chart shows over 7. Which number's correct? I believe it is on page, what do you mean? So, it says here, it says there, it's a big difference.
Which page you referring to, Denise?
I think it was on page 3. When he was speaking, he said 5%, but one of his charts showed 7%. Page 3, right, the left column on the right-hand side.
Yeah, no, the 5, right.
7.19% increase.
Right.
2018.
That, that's the assessment. Where the 5, yeah, where the 5 came in, it wasn't that, it was, the 5% was with the.
Well, my question is.
The 5% was with the, I mentioned the 5% with the, the tax dollar increase.
Okay, so the average assessment is expected to go up around approximately 7%?
That's correct.
So, I guess the point I want to make to the Selectmen, I mean, you're really in a no-win situation. Either way, the residents or the businesses aren't going to be happy. I disagree with you, Anthony. While the increased value in our houses does help if we want to sell our properties, we're certainly going to make a profit. The issue is we want to live there.
I wasn't necessarily referring to the real estate market. I was referring to the economic climate as a whole.
No, I understand, I, I understand, I'm just being vague. For lack of a better word.
It actually flows just the opposite as I expected when I first came on the board because when economic times were bad and property values plummeted, you would think you'd want to put more on the, on the industry. But the values dropped so much, we were able to shift a little bit off commercial and put it on the residents and there wasn't really that notification. They didn't really notice it because the evaluations dropped. So, it kind of works the opposite way of what you think, in my opinion.
Well, either way, the price goes up.
Right.
You have one go down, that sounds great, the tax rate went down, yay, but our, our best value goes up.
But that's how, that's the constraints of 2.5, that's, it has to be like that.
That's how I explain it, that's the multiplier, that's what you use. And then the bill goes up.
Right. So, I just, you know, I guess it's the face of the residents that I'm saying here needs to be represented when you do talk about the split. I feel for the businesses, I do. But again, the residents want to live in their houses. And as these rates go up, I mean, their income isn't going up at the same rate. A lot of folks living on fixed income don't look forward to a 5%, 10%.
Well, I think usually what you're saying, like, business usually increases before they pass that down to their employees. I know that's the way with my, in my industry. The company has to do better well before the employees do and that's what we're seeing, but it hasn't caught up yet.
It hasn't caught up.
It's the same thing with government. They, they start doing better before we see the trickle down to us. So, that's why I'm proposing somewhat of a larger split. And I think we worked for years to try to bring it closer together because in tough times, you want those businesses to come in and town. And I think we're there.
Appreciate your time, thank you.
Thank you. Ellen, you have a motion, Anthony, you have a motion?
I have a motion, 1.38. I think that's where it belongs, it's kind of in the middle. I looked at the 1.40, which was suggested by the assessors. But then again, I want to think of the, of the businesses too.
There was no recommendation.
I mean, I know, he didn't make any recommendations.
No.
He did bring that, he did bring that figure up and I ran that through today and I, and I sat down with the assessors this afternoon to try to come up with some kind of economical thing. And I think there's where we should be this year. And having to look at another year there and, you know, thinking, like I said before, you've got some people out there that get hit on both sides. They, they got businesses in town and they, and they paid a residential too, so they, they got no way to hide.
I apologize, I nearly forgot something. I'm assuming you just got this tonight and this is the first time you're looking at it?
Yeah.
And our assessors have had it, I would assume, for a while and put some great thought into it. So, could Mr. McCarthy give us this recommendation?
I think that would actually be up to the entire board. They haven't given a recommendation, I'd say, in probably six years.
Oh, okay.
By the way, this was changed, you know, late in the play. We didn't have this done and completed until today.
But it's not, it has not been.
Kicking around for a while, right.
Practice for the board to take a vote. In fact, one time when I called individually in the members, there was no unanimous, well, there was no consensus.
Right, and when I first started in the business, the boards, and I don't know how they've changed, but the boards were not allowed to make a recommendation.
Could I make a recommendation that in the future, maybe you get this information sooner than the night you have to make the decision so that you can have some open discussion regarding it?
Talk to the Department of Revenue.
We'll take care of it, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Jerry, I'd like to say one thing. I did have this last night and I spent time with John this morning on the phone about 8:00 AM on my drive into work and we did discuss it beforehand.
Same here, it happened to me. I had another copy of this too and I just didn't like what I saw. And I sat down with him this afternoon and trying to bring this a little bit more in perspective as far as the percentage-wise goes.
Okay, so we have a motion on the floor for a 1.38 split. Do you have a question, sorry?
I have a question. Did the town determine exactly what they need for operating expenses to decide how they were going to do this?
Yes, that was done at a town meeting, all this.
We want lower.
All this does is split, it doesn't, the, the dollar value doesn't change, it's just where the, it's, here's your part, now which, which way is it gonna be paid? That's all we really determined tonight?
I have one of each property, so...
I know, you're in the same category, I told you.
It's a blessing and a, and a curse. I know, it's, it's great then, when we have a lot of, uh, business owners still live in town, and, but that's why I think we're, we're trying to make the one that, uh, is the least effect to everybody.
But this is already set to make sure it covers the town's budget.
Correct.
And I'd like to say something on behalf of the assessors. I know he didn't want to give the amount. It's, it's a big amount that's been saved, uh, going to the, uh, the Palix Board and their...
Absolutely, yeah.
And, and he, he didn't give the amount, but the big, so, whatever we pay these two individuals there, I'll tell you, we're getting a mountain of money out of it.
Yeah.
Well, let's, let's stick to the classification, um...
Yep.
...portion right now. Uh, so we have a motion. Do I have a second for the 138 split?
Second, although I disagree with it.
Okay, I have a motion, a second for any further discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Opposed.
Two to one. All right, is there anything else on the classification here? Yes?
Chairman, just a couple of, uh...
No, no one wants to hear.
Correct.
Just some items. First of all, there's a letter of authorization. I think you have it.
Right.
I would appreciate action on that this evening to authorize me to sign.
That'll be signed tonight.
Electronically, because I want to set the tax rate tonight after the meeting. Um, and I also have a duty to inform you that your excess levy capacity, uh, before I sign the LA five on your behalf, the excess levy capacity for the current fiscal year is calculated at one million, five hundred twenty-four, eight hundred eighty-eight dollars and forty-seven cents. So, you're that, you are that far below your ability to tax.
So, we're not taxing for the two and a half?
Right. That's a good thing.
I understand that.
Yeah.
And, and third, Mr. Chairman, if you would indulge me, I just want to thank everybody who's been involved in this process, from you, the board, from the Board of Assessors, from the town administrator, the town clerk, the town collector and treasurer, the town accountant. Everybody has contributed significantly to this process. As you can see just by this document, a lot of work, a lot of preparation comes into it, and I just want to thank everybody for their assistance.
Thank you very much.
We're all set.
Motion to close the hearing?
So moved.
Second.
Favor?
Aye.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Okay, anytime.
I'll be back with some people.
Uh, Canoe Club Ballroom. I'm sorry, I think the residents are here from, the people are here from Chili's, so we'll move ahead. Uh, this is a change of management. Uh, no one's coming in for the Canoe Club? Okay, great.
Good evening.
Good evening, gentlemen. I'm actually, we, uh, I'm the current president of the West Bridgewater Lions Club, and we actually have an event at your restaurant coming up this week, so I am going to recuse myself. Um, I believe, uh, Selectman Kenahan will also recuse himself, but, uh, then have to vote, uh, per necessity.
Good. All right, well, so my name's Kyle Gill, and if it pleases, pleases Selectman, I'll do a quick, um, transactional summary of, um, the transaction. I'm here with Jesse Lamareau. He's the proposed manager for Pepe Dineang DBA Chili's. Um, he's had fifteen years of experience in alcoholic beverages and retail, and eight recently as being a general manager. He was the general manager of Longhorn Steakhouse. He's tip certified, and, um, we're here to answer any other questions the, the board, uh, the Selectman might have.
I have no questions. Tracy, do you have anything?
Nope, I'd just say that their application is received. It's complete. Um, all of the background reviews have been done, and, um, all indications are to move forward.
Is this the only change you want to make, or is there any...
That's the only change.
Nothing, nothing is gonna change. It's basically gonna be the same.
Yep.
Okay. No, I have no other questions.
No questions? Motion?
I'll make a motion to, uh, grant it.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All set?
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good luck.
All right, um, I see Ms. Williams is here, who runs an unbelievable business. If you're not aware, uh, Ms. Williams runs, uh, Boston...
Ballistic.
Ballistic Hot Sauce. My refrigerator is full of it, and I absolutely love it. Well, um...
Should we recuse you?
No, I can eat it. I just can't, uh... Uh, you want to tell us a little bit about yourself and why you would like to be on the commission?
Um, on the ag commission? Um, we, we, Boston Ballistic got involved with Marcy at the First Church Farmers Market for the town of West Bridgewater, and with Marcy, we've been trying to make the West Bridgewater Farmers Market a better market, to get people in, out of town, to get more people within our town involved in the farmers market, and, um, I want to really help with that, and I think being on the ag commission, where the ag commission works with the First Church, I could really...
Great.
...do a lot to help the town, you know, to make, I would like to make it one of the best farmer's market around for the town of West Bridgewater.
I think it's an awesome thing we have, and I know it's been, some of the years been a struggle. They're doing really well now. Uh, it's picked up.
Yeah.
Uh, I, I think I tried to extend out the, if there's anything our office can do to help out, if it's, uh, on the website or whatnot, let us know, but, uh, I think it's a great thing. I know it was started a number of years ago, and it's, uh, changed and altered a little bit here and there, so it's awesome.
All of it, sir.
Yeah, it's an awesome thing. It's just, it's great to see a little town with so much agriculture still existing, and a lot of people don't think of a business like a hot sauce, but I know you guys produce and grow all your stuff, and, um, you know, so people that don't know you exist in town. It's an awesome product made right here in West Bridgewater, and, uh, hopefully we'll see it on some tables at some restaurants. It'd be awesome. Um, so I assume the board, uh, recommends, Ms. Williams?
Yeah, we had a unanimous for the quorum, that we had, we had a quorum.
Right. Okay. David, anything else?
Nope.
Okay.
You have an opening on, on that board for this, right?
Yeah.
Who are, okay.
From, um, Bill Gibson.
Great. Okay, I will instill, entertain a motion for the appointment.
So moved.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks for really, uh, helping out. It's great to, great to see little businesses in town, and I know you're doing well with a great product.
Thank you.
Okay, Canoe Club Ballroom. Uh, this is a transfer, uh, in beneficiary, uh, interest from Stacy Marola and Paul Marola Estate to Stacy Marola. Unfortunately, uh, you probably all know Paul Marola passed away, um, and so this will be giving the remaining portion of ownership, I believe, solely to Stacy.
That's correct.
Okay. Um, another great business that's doing really well in town. Not to give them a commercial, but if you go in and check out their facilities, it's unbelievable. They had a major renovation and a very historic, uh, site. If you look back in history, you'll see that, uh, river was the hustle and bustle of social, uh, outings and whatnot in town, so it's great to see a business doing so well and really investing in the, in the town, and it's great to see them. Uh, is everything in line?
It is.
Okay. Anyone have any questions?
No. I make a motion to, uh, to grant it.
Second.
Okay, any further discussion? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay. Um, discussion on Clint Howard's membership in the Agriculture Commission. David?
Sure. So, a couple of months ago, we were contacted by the Agricultural Commission. They informed us that Mr. Howard had not been attending the commission meetings. They asked the Board of Selectmen, based on the fact that you have a seventy-five percent requirement, to send out a letter to that, to him, to inform him that he is not complying with that requirement. We did on September twenty-fifth. Unfortunately, we received no response. I understand that the Agricultural Commission also reached out to him multiple times. It sounds like at least through phone calls, but we also know through a letter as well. Again, he has been non-responsive, and although Marcy is here to speak to it, my understanding is that he has not attended any additional meetings as well. Seeing that he's non-compliant, they are requesting, and I would, um, I would recommend that at this point you take a vote to remove him from the committee.
But David, is he up for a reappointment?
I don't know that. I did not, I did not look at my...
It's a three-year, right?
I don't, I don't know.
It's been four, it's been one, it's been over a year, but he, he hasn't attended any, since he not voted in.
He hasn't attended one meeting?
Not one.
Do we know if he's even been sworn in?
Don't know.
Um, I can look into it, but I don't believe we got notification from the town clerk that he wasn't sworn in, so that would mean he was, but...
What I'd like to do is give him the last benefit of the doubt. If, uh, we don't hear back from him by the next meeting, uh, it'll be considered his resignation. Um, again, normally, we don't remove people without a hearing in the, in the middle of their term. Um, traditionally, we would do that at reappointment time. I don't think his position's up, but I do think if he's not taking part, for whatever reason, then, um, he should respectfully step down, and this will, this will accomplish that, and hopefully get somebody new on, and that wants to be active.
Didn't we do this once already? Wasn't he on agenda a month or so ago?
Yes, that's what happened. He was on our, um, in our agenda back in September. We issued him a letter on September twenty-fifth. We made him aware that, what the requirement is, and that he has been non-compliant, and we asked him to become compliant, and we have not heard from him.
And, and just, um, so that you're aware, I did reach out to him by email about this meeting to give him the opportunity to come in and speak, and I, I didn't get a response.
I mean, I'd say we remove him so that it can be filled.
Help him?
What, what did he just say?
I'd say we remove him so that the position can be filled with someone else.
Well, I, I think he's been given due notice, and if he was interested, I think he would have contacted us. For some reason or other, he didn't get the, but, but he was an email, right?
That's correct.
Well, correct me if I'm wrong. I think, Marcy, I believe you've attempted to reach out to him as well. So, I, I think all parties between our office through email, through traditional mail, and the Agricultural Commission has attempted to reach him. So, um, we can do one of two things. Either one, you could take the vote tonight if you want, as Chairman Lawrence has suggested, is that we send out one last letter and say that if we don't hear from you by such and such date, you'll automatically be removed and try to...
Was an actual letter sent to his mailing address?
Yeah.
Okay. I didn't know if it was just emailed or actually mailed.
So, the email was related to this meeting tonight.
Okay.
This was sent previously.
Okay. I guess unfortunately, then, is that he's not interested. Okay. So, Anthony has a motion to, uh, remove?
Correct.
A second?
Oh, second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
All right. All right, liquor license renewal. Um, traditionally, we've just asked for, for a renewal of them all, but when it comes to liquor licenses, uh, Trace, I don't know if you have the actual list in front of you?
Yep.
Uh, but if you would, please read all the, um, from the top to bottom, a list of all liquor licenses that will be voted on. We'll vote on it as one block vote?
Sure.
Unless there's any exceptions.
Sure. Um, so, what I've done is listed all of the establishments. I'll read through them. The recommendation is to approve them all except for one, um, which is Malarkies. They did not file renewal paperwork, and several violations were noted during the annual liquor agent, um, from the police department's annual inspections.
Okay.
Um, so, up for renewal, Frida's, Samusette Broad and Gun Club, Yangtze, The Canoe Club, Jesse's Liquors, Macy's Liquors, Hockamock Liquors, Town Line General Store, Riverbend Country Club, Trukie's, The Corner Market, Boston Tavern, Hardy Catering, Chili's, Crystal's Kitchen, Athena Asian Bistro, Bridgewater Quick Stop, Narahuka Lounge, Grand Slam Pizza and Pub, Nico Bar and Grill, Epicure, Barrett's Ale House, La Odessa, New York Pizza, and that concludes the list.
Okay. Do I have a motion to approve the renewals as presented?
Could we go, before we vote on this, could we go through the Hookah Lounge letter in here from the chief?
Sure.
Who we actually vote on?
Sure, and there were, those were, there were two call-ups that I wanted to make, um...
Let's move on them all, with the exception of Malarkies and Nora's, and we can come back to it.
That's fine.
Because that's on the agenda as another item, so...
Okay, I'll make a motion.
Second.
All the other ones.
Okay, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, let's go up to the, uh, the two that have questions. We'll start with Nora's Hookah Lounge.
Um...
Hookah Lounge, sorry.
So, um, this is noted because during the police department's annual inspection, they noted a violation which was, and there's a, there's a full report, but in essence, it was, they were selling liquor that was outside of their license. So, that was the, um, that was what was found there. And then, Malarkies, obviously, we talked, they didn't, um, submit their application, but there were also, oh, no, I'm sorry, Bridgewater Quick Stop. Um, so, also during the annual inspection, um, the crux of it is that the person who was working was not a manager or an assistant manager, and, um, they were not even an employee, they said. They weren't tip certified, obviously.
This is Bridgewater Quick Stop?
Correct.
Ah. We already approved that one?
And so, and the follow-up recommendation was to not necessarily hold up the approval, but to send, um, a letter...
To both of those?
To both of those establishments regarding the violations that were found.
Is it both of their first offenses?
Um, I'm gonna do a little bit more research before I ask you to sign off on the communication going out to them. I believe this may be the second violation for Bridgewater Quick Stop, but I want to verify that.
Nothing's come to us before. So, I would say it's the first violation we're hearing.
And that's what I want to verify, because I saw, I saw a draft communication, so I just want to make sure.
Um, I mean, there's, there's quite often when there's small violations, the police department will say, hey, you need to get this taken care of. Uh, sometimes it's simple things like pricing and, uh, whatnot has to be published, um, that necessarily wouldn't come to us anyways. It's more of them saying, hey, get into compliance. Um, so I'd say whatever our actions are can only be based on what's really brought to us.
Sure, and so I'll verify whether or not it actually went out, um, and the letter that is sent out will reflect that.
Okay. Do I have a motion to send the letters of concern, initial concern, to both establishments? That would be Bridgewater Quick Stop and Nora's Hookah Lounge?
So moved.
Second.
Any further discussion on those two? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I'll entertain a motion to approve both licenses pending the receipt of their violation letter.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And finally, Malarkies. I've heard, uh, mixed stories that they plan on reopening in two weeks, that they opened last week for a day, and, uh, um, you know, about three, four weeks ago, they just stopped opening with no communication, and believe that includes the Board of Health. Uh, the land, the property owner did allow the health inspector in, I believe, in the building inspector, probably, um, just to inspect the building to make sure it wasn't gonna be infested with bugs and rodents and whatnot, but we've received no communication from them whatsoever.
No, and we've reached out to them by mail. Um, we've called, we've emailed, we've heard nothing.
I did think it was very odd. One day, I did call to speak to the owner, and they said they didn't know who he was. Um, so I thought that was a little odd, but, okay, so, uh, if and when they come in to apply...
Yeah, I was gonna say, and just so you're aware, the license runs out at the end of the year. So, normally, if this was happening during the course of the licensing year, we would have a revocation hearing. Seeing the fact that it's at the end of the year and we haven't received any of his paperwork, then all we would do is we'd allow the license to lapse, and therefore, um, you know, he would have to reapply at that point for it, as, as any other business would.
Should we send a letter letting them know that we, um, have you communicated with, well, I guess we're not getting any response anyways, unfortunately, so...
Yeah, we, so, yeah, we communicated the date that the application was due back with the office. Um, we could always send a communication after the end of the year, um, stating that his license is expired.
Okay. What, have any other issues?
No.
Okay. Uh, let's see. Host community for the Rotary, City, Rotary Club Citizen of the Year. I asked this be on the agenda at the last meeting. Uh, the Rotary Club is one of at least three community service groups that, uh, service our community. Uh, there's the Bridgewater's Kiwanis, obviously, the West Bridgewater Lions, and the Bridgewater's, There's the Bridgewater's Kiwanis, obviously the West Bridgewater Lions, and the Bridgewater's Rotary. The Bridgewater's Rotary represents all three of the Bridgewater's, and each year hosts a, what I consider, an outstanding, great program, and that's the Citizen of the Year Award. This year, again, we gave it to Billy Cavadas. Oh, I, we, they gave it to Billy Cavadas, and it was a great ceremony. I just wanted to reach out to the Rotary and let them know that we would love to be the host community. I did communicate with the Director at the Council on Aging. She is very open to that and said it's, uh, really the type of thing she'd like to see there. Not that they want to move it to West Bridgewater, but just to let them know the facility would be available at free of charge, really for all they do for our community. They give scholarships and all the great things the Rotary does, so. I just wanted it on the agenda for an official vote to put out the hand of welcome and let them know if they want to come to West Bridgewater. We'd love to have them.
Moved.
Second.
Elton's a past recipient.
Yep.
Not to make Anthony feel bad, but so ain't I.
I have plenty of time to catch up.
Yes, you do. Many, many years. Alright, we have a motion to second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Uh, Crescent Street, no left turn discussion. David, I believe you've got a map for us.
I do.
Excellent.
So Selectman Marrera asked us to be placed on the agenda, and so we've placed it on the agenda. And what I've done is I've provided a map because you could see Crescent Street coming on to Route 106. And I thought that it would be wise, as we had this conversation, so that we could have a visual as to what it is that, what, as to what we're looking to do. So Selectman Marrera, I'll turn it over to you.
Well, the only thing is, it seems to be a bottleneck, although there hasn't been a lot of act, maybe a few Fender businesses up there. The traffic that's coming in from 106 is coming off the highway. Uh, it's like suicide to get on that lane anyhow to come in, and then you got these trucks coming out of there too. And, uh, you know, and, and it's pretty well blocked in to get out into traffic. And the traffic's backed up. The lady over at the post office, she was, she was the one that asked me if we could do something there, because she comes up every morning there, and there's a big bottleneck there. Uh, I realized maybe the, uh, this would be a short-term solution, and the long-term would be to have a light there, but we're gonna, uh, you know, have to, I know this was studied by the O'Carroll Planning Council, but we have to put some money, uh, in there to, and get on the list, uh, to do that. But I think, uh, to do nothing, I think, really, and, uh, it's, it's very, very hard to get across that. And you're blocking the people to come in, and they're backed up.
So what you're recommending is if I'm coming down Crescent Street, uh, there's no left-hand turn onto 106?
Right. Just like we did for the, uh, the coffee shop.
Well, that, right. You can't pull a Vannity and take a left.
Right.
Okay. Um, my only concern is that's gonna force traffic down West Street to what's a little bit of a quieter neighborhood. They may not be all that happy with it. I understand what you're trying to do. That does filter off some of the traffic.
But it's a better approach to 106. At least there's more space there that you can see. Because that, that traffic that's going east there, uh, in that very, very narrow space up there, you can't really see them come behind the cars. And over there, there's a lot more turning radius to, uh, to use, uh, you know, West Street.
The only good thing about taking a left at Crescent Street instead of West Street is quite often traffic waiting to take a left onto Crescent Street
Yeah, that's what I mean.
lets people out.
Yeah, right.
Same for Lincoln Street.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So that's the only reason to say not to take that left.
I don't want to get involved with Lincoln Street because there's people that live down there, they, you know. And usually the traffic stops there and they get in there, you know. I just don't want to cause a big scene, but I think this would be a, a step in the right direction to do something.
There haven't been a lot of accidents there.
Anthony?
I'm not sure what it would solve. I think that it's nearly the same as West Street. It would just be pushing all the cars onto one street instead of splitting it up over two. And after reading the, um, letter from OCPC and especially the chief, the chief says, I believe this, I believe this proposed signage will not solve any traffic issues, but may cause other related issues and complaints. And he says that, um, it averages only one or two accidents per year. I just, I'd have a hard time going against the police chief's recommendation for changing the, um, directions on a, on a road.
We'll open it up to anyone in the audience that wishes to say anything to break the silence.
Well, I just think it's a good idea. I mean, I know, I usually go along with the chief's recommendation, but there is a problem there. There's a bigger problem there. I mean, there might be not a, you know, a big high accident thing there, but it's, uh, it's, the visibility is, uh, is very, very hard. And to get in and out of there the way it is now, it's, uh, and especially, I call it the suicide lane to come in there anyhow. I mean, because you never know if you're gonna get hit from the front or the back, and then you're waiting for somebody to come out, and they can't get the clearance to get out into, uh, uh, 106.
What if we were to ask the chief if he would be opposed to putting up a sign, give it a trial thing for maybe three months, see if it helps the flow. Um, if he doesn't feel it's helped, or if it's created further problems, the sign comes down. The only cost we would incur is a sign that could be used elsewhere anyways. Um, that way, we're at least giving it a try and see if it helps, um, but not making it a permanent fix until we see if it actually works.
I'd be, I'd be amenable to that.
Anthony?
I'm kinda skeptical just to try something like that.
Well, I think that my, my, my recommendation is we ask the chief if he would be, uh,
Yeah, no, I'm definitely fine with asking.
And if the chief says absolutely not, then I don't think we should do it. I, you know, we don't, we hire professionals to make the decisions. But we're not trained and experts in.
Yeah, I mean, OCPC suggests a light, and they, I believe, suggest doing other things if you are going to do a right turn.
For a light, you're gonna probably have to take, take property to align the property, probably a piece of property across the street. As we know, there's development that's probably gonna come down. There's a big housing thing there where the Flowers was and.
Well, I don't think that's the fault. I think he's just saying what OCPC's.
Yeah, so they, but I believe in, yeah, they state not to do the right turn only unless you do something else, and I forget what that something else is.
Well, let's, um.
If you have a, uh, a long-term solution, I think that's what something else is.
Yeah. Let's, um, approve a three-month trial if the, if the police chief's amenable, um, to, to give that a trial, or if he thinks it has any merit, um, not making it a permanent change. Um, if the chief doesn't think it's worth the try, then we just scrap it and we move on until that area's developed, which eventually will happen.
So moved.
Do I have a second?
No.
I'll second.
I just.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Opposed.
For those wondering what we're signing, this is the certifying, uh, what we voted tonight for the tax classification. Needs to get filed online and signed and certified by the board tonight, so, um, it'll be sent to the Department of Revenue tonight once the signatures were, that are required or passed in. This is what we had voted on during the meeting. Tracy has it.
Thank you.
Your authorization letter?
Oh, sorry.
Does that require our signature too, or? The authorization letter?
Is it in this one, Trace?
It is.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I think it's in that file, yeah, it is.
John, what's it look like?
I think it's gonna be signed by us too, right? The authorization letter? Did you all sit now?
Thank you again.
Thank you for a good serve.
Okay, David, award the energy contract?
So unbeknownst to me, we actually, our municipal buildings are on a separate energy source through Constellation Company. It was actually done prior to I came on board about five years ago. Uh, it's a four-year contract. It expires at the end of December. So I started looking at other sources. It looks like Constellation is offering the best pricing at this point. I've been working with Selectman Kinnahan on this for about two weeks. Uh, and at the end, we have an opportunity to be able to sign a five-year contract at a rate of 9.69 cents per kilowatt. Uh, we've been pricing it on a daily basis, tried to negotiate a little bit on the pricing as well. As a, as a, as a metric, when we went out for aggregation, it came in at 11 cents over the course of one year. So we feel like this, based on what the market rate conditions are, is that we think that this is the best we're going to do, and we want to try to lock in as the lowest price that we possibly can for the long term.
A motion to approve?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
So that, that'll give us the lower rate. That's what we try to achieve.
Okay, award the contract for drug and alcohol testing.
Yep. So Mr. Chairman, as you know, we use Ceridge, which is our procurement facility that with 21, 20 other towns. Uh, we go out to bid on an annual basis for all of our contracts. This is the one for drug and alcohol testing. Uh, this will be to award a three-year contract, and so it's before you for your vote and approval.
So moved.
Second.
Any further discussion? David, what departments does this cover?
Um, highway, well, Public Works and the Water Department.
Well, it would cover anyone that we decide we want to go to testing, right?
Um, yes, except that the ones that.
As long as it wasn't a union issuer.
Correct. And because they, they are required, um, to do drug testing. That's why, uh, that's why we do it on annual basis.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Acceptance for, uh, of November 15th for review?
Moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Discussion, December 20th and January 24th meetings. David?
So the reason I placed this on the, the agenda is, is twofold. One is, is that Selectman Kinnahan informed me that December 20th will not work for him, and what, we are not going to have a lot on that agenda. But at least in my opinion, one of the items that will be highly important is the fact that we're going to have a new fire chief coming on board on January 1, and so I would like to be able to hold a ceremony for him as we do with any other uh, in, uh, upper echelon employee or, or department head. And so as a result, uh, we'd like to be able to invite his family in, the town clerk in, and to be able to swear him in, and do it with a full board. Uh, I was going to propose December 21st. However, December 21st will not work for a handful of other reasons, so this evening, if acceptable, I'm going to propose December 19th.
I didn't bring my schedule with me. That was one of the dates I gave you anyways, right? Pretty sure I was.
I want to say yes because I want to make the recommendation.
Jerry can't be here. Let's make it the 19th. Okay. Uh, is there any problem with the 19th? And there will be a brief meeting, um.
It should be, it should be fairly sharp. You know, there'll be a handful of items on it, but unless with something else happens between now and then, um, it should be a short meeting.
I just see December 19th, right?
Correct.
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second, and thank you, Paul.
Aye. January 24th meeting.
And then in reference to January 24th, I was being courteous to Selectman Marrera because I recognize that at the end of every month, he always has another obligation with OCPC. I was looking at the calendar really quick. I assumed that January 24th was the last Wednesday of that month. However, in sitting with Selectman Marrera today, it turns out, we all know January is 31 days. I just didn't think that it was the last Wednesday. Turns out it is. We confirmed with OCPC today. He will have his meeting on January 31st, so as a result, the January 24th meeting can stand as you've already voted, unless you choose otherwise.
I was saying, that's New Year's Eve, as you see, we don't have the, how it is. I don't even know if he realizes that. It's gonna be a hard night to get the quorum up there, but what are they gonna do, right?
Alright. Moving on, uh, ratify the chief's employment contract?
Yep. So, um, before you is, as you know, you appointed a new fire chief at last meeting. You've asked me to meet with him. Um, I incorporated your desires into his contract. He has agreed, and therefore, it is before you for your ratification.
So moved.
Second.
I want to thank everyone working on this contract and, of course, welcome our new chief. With that being said, is there any further discussion on the contract? All those in favor?
Aye.
It's exciting times. Alright, communication reports from boards, commissions, and town officials. Do we have anything? Correspondence from the public to determine a course of action? Anything? Alright, public comment period? Again, anything? Paul, I, uh, didn't really recognize you officially during our hearing, but Paul is the newest member of the Board of Assessors, so, um, that was fun going through that process first time, and thanks for your willingness to serve.
Anything for you, Jerry.
Excellent.
Just name it.
Alright. Town administrators report. David?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So first on the agenda is, we're going to officially start our budget season this evening. So I'll just back up for 30 seconds. The lady that was in the room earlier was talking about, did we pass a, did we split the rate today to be able to cover our bills and our obligations? The answer is yes. And as the chairman noted at that point, in June of every year, we actually set a budget for the upcoming year, and then we spend five or six minutes, five or six months to the assessing department to determine how we're going to actually pay for it. So that's actually what happened today. So with that said, we're going to start the budget season for FY19 this evening because I'm going to ask you to vote a budget message. When I send out the budget message, I also send out the budgets, and I ask everybody to fill in what their requests are. However, there's a couple of budgets I'm gonna bring to your attention this year that I'm hoping that the Selectmen will approve that we should, we should change. As you know, we have combined the forestry department, the highway department, into one public works department. So therefore, we can't have a separate forestry budget and a separate highway budget. We need to be able to combine those. But I think it gives us the opportunity to be able to combine a handful of other budgets that for whatever reason have always been separated out under highway as well. So you'll see before you the forestry budget, the DPW general administration budget. The next budget down, which is DPW highway, that is where they actually purchase all their supplies, so that way they can work on the roads. And the next one down is vehicle maintenance, which is basically where our town mechanic is housed in that budget. All of those, which is frustrating from an administrative standpoint, have the same lines. So all of them, for example, F-5301, appointed official, all of them have some other line in there that you buy paper clips. So you buy, um, um, you know, whatever else, other supplies. So it makes no sense to continue to have all these different budgets because we're always trying to reconcile that we're putting them into the same, into the right account. So my recommendation to you is, is that we combine those four budgets into one public works budget. And just for your edification, I want to inform you that if by doing so, it would, by combining them all, you'd have about a $1 million budget based on this year's appropriation. I've met with the town accountant on this issue. She has no issues with combining them. In fact, she thinks it's wise to do it. However, she has advised me that three other considered highway budgets, which is snow removal, street lighting, and waste disposal cannot be combined. Snow removal makes sense because we deficit spend out of that. Um, what I was unaware of is that street lighting is a separate line item that is reported to the Department of Revenue. So she says that we should keep that separate, and because of the way we, uh, we do our waste disposal, we should do that as well. So what I'm informing the board and asking for your support on is that we have one public works budget that combines those four that is presented, and then we keep the other three as separate line items and separate budgets as we always have. And then the other budget is, in reference to the Board of Selectmen and the Town Administrator. I've never seen this before. When I came to this town, I was kinda, I was surprised, as you know, I've worked in two other towns. Usually, if you have a town manager, a town manager will have his own separate budget because he is technically in charge of that, of, of, of his budget. But I'm a town administrator. In essence, I'm really your department head. And so the town administrator's budget and the Board of Selectmen's budget, again, should be merged. From an administrative standpoint, it would be helpful because, again, I have the same lines as you have. I have dues and meetings. I have paper supplies. We're forever in the office trying to figure out exactly which budget we're supposed to take it out of. It doesn't make a lot of sense to do that. The second item, and I've spoken to Selectman Kinnahan about this, is that if, imagine if you had a police department, and then you had a separate police chief budget. That wouldn't make a lot of sense. We asked the police chief to run the budget on behalf of the police department. You asked me on a daily basis to run the budget on behalf of the Board of Selectmen. So what this does is, is that this would also allow me that instead of every time you guys get a $16 bill, I have to wait till all three of you to come in to sign it, it would allow me to be able to sign it. As you know, you still get the warrant at the end of the week where you sign bills for all departments. But it would create some efficiencies. It would certainly help the administrative staff. And I think that that's just wise for us, since we're gonna do it with the public works department, that we do it with the Board of Selectmen at the exact same time.
David, I think with the, a town meeting, it's just gonna be explained very well. With the DPW, it's gonna be easy. It was two departments, or three departments, now it's one. Without a department, it's gonna look like we have a huge increase, so it just needs to be explained clearly that that was just moved in where it belonged. Um, you, you, again, you're the day-to-day manager of the, of the department. Uh, but other than that, I don't have a problem with it. I think it simplifies things. Um, there's a, like we said during the proposal, merging the highway forestry, there was a lot of repeat items in their budgets uh, that don't really show what you're running the department. Now it's one line, so we can really see what it's costing to run our DPW. So I don't have a problem with the merging of those. Um, and it's, it's wise to keep the snow removal, like, is that separate, so.
Um, police department and K-9?
Yeah, I can't do it. I inquired, just so the rest of the board knows, again, I've been spending ample time on this issue with Selectman Kinnahan. The police department runs an animal control budget, which is only $8,900. Their budget's $2 million. So, you know, $8,900, it would make more sense to make that a one-line item in their budget. Again, according to the town accountant, she's telling me that due to D O I regulations, I can't separate it out. So as a result, we can't do it.
I believe I spoke with her, and the title actually has to say animal control,
That is correct.
even though that's not a proper title for the position.
That is correct, because, again, many of these, it's like a fence viewer. You know, I mean, some of these statutes are literally 200 years old.
Okay. Do you need a vote to, for the merger of the, of the budgets?
I would like one only because if I'm gonna send out the budgets to these respective department heads, and we are going to have a discussion with the Finance Committee and Town Meeting, it should be duly noted that the Board of Selectmen was in favor of this. If you want to do it, which is with the, um, the highway forestry and leave it as it is with the Board of Selectmen and the Town Ministers, we could do that too.
It doesn't make sense to be separate. I think I talked about that when you first came on, and I used to talk about the bottom. It was just the way it was always done. Doesn't mean it's right.
No, because I'll give you an example. This is not unprecedented. About 10 or 12 years ago, you used to run a separate ambulance budget from a fire budget, and nobody, that didn't make any sense either, and they combined it. The fire chief was overseeing both, and again, from an administrative standpoint, it didn't make sense. And now nobody thinks twice about it. They're all combined into one budget.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion to combine budgets?
So moved.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. David, I know this is premature, but as we're moving on to the budget message, you and I met with the Lieutenant Governor. We also had our state rep and our state senator there. Amongst the numerous things, we talked about education, drug issues. The big discussion was traffic lights for our town. Two, one with a higher priority than the other. But the other was sidewalks. And I think since I've been a Selectman, we've been talking about sidewalks. And we haven't built a sidewalk yet. We haven't rebuilt a sidewalk yet. We haven't constructed a sidewalk. We've done a lot of talk. And I know you talked to the Lieutenant Governor briefly about some matching money, which allows the town to do these projects because when the state steps in, one that costs quadruple because of regulations that they go by that are their own guidelines, but they stick with them, where the town could do the projects a lot less. I really would like the town to, at least as a start, put a hundred thousand dollars in a line item for construction and maintenance of sidewalks. There's a woman that up here on, quite often, you know, you hear people talk about the condition of the sidewalks are awful. Well, then you think, well, at least you have one. But there's a woman up the street here that lives up by Huckamawak that's taken two falls. She's a handicapped woman, falling on the sidewalks because they're horrible condition. I don't, it's not that I don't want to go for the money. Obviously, we've been trying and trying and trying to get state money for sidewalks. It just hasn't happened. And I think it's time we start setting some money aside, even if like, I know we've had discussions about it. Even if we only get a couple hundred feet, a couple hundred yards of sidewalk a year, it's a start. And I didn't want to put it on Sean and Chris when we first merged the departments as a goal, hitting them right off the beginning with that. This gives them time. It won't be till the next fiscal year. But they need to come up with a priority list of where they want to see sidewalks, what sidewalks need repair, what type of equipment we need to maintain the sidewalks, to clean the sidewalks. It's just been going on forever, probably before I was a Selectman, and we haven't done anything, so this is the opportunity. I think the town's financially in a good position, so I think this is the time we set some money aside and start doing some work.
I was talking about the sidewalk issue anyhow. If we put seed money into something like that, we stand even a better chance to get money from the state, because we started on something, we got a project going.
I think that there's some great plans. John Delano's working on the River Walk, which is a boardwalk, which ultimately is a sidewalk in a very, very important area. That's on River Street along the front of the Canoe Club. That's just all part of the project, but if we don't have any money to do anything, we're just going in circles and talking just for the sake of talking. So I'd like to see that down in the next fiscal year.
Will do.
So move. You want a motion?
Sure.
Okay. I'll make a motion.
Well, should we wait for the exact amount until budget time comes? I mean, I agree. I don't know what the right number is. Maybe it's more. Maybe we won't be able to do 100. So I think we should wait on the number until we know where we are.
I think it's a good, a good start though, because a hundred thousand dollars, though it sounds like a lot of money, is not a lot of sidewalk. You know, unfortunately, we had discussions with some developments in town to make sure they did sidewalks in front of the establishment. It was overturned by another board, probably not knowing our intent or our goals. So it is a little bit of a setback when we thought we were making leeway. So I think at least saying a hundred thousand dollars is a good start and shows some initiative. So I would like to see... Well, why don't we do this? Why don't we ask you to put money in the budget?
I will.
For sidewalk construction, and we'll go from there, that that'll be the, the vote would be to earmark funds for sidewalk construction and let David come back as you are a professional with the numbers that you think are adequate that will fit into the budget.
Will do.
That works.
You want a motion?
Yes, please.
Yeah, I'll give you that motion.
Second.
Okay. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
So the next on the agenda is the actual budget message. So every single year, you take a vote. I send out a message to all department heads and ask them to place what they believe they need to be, for appropriations, to run their respective budgets for the following year. Last year, what we did was we asked them to be level services, and if they were going to have any increases, to please explain what they are. And so with your approval, that's the same letter that I will send out with that message.
I'll make a motion to send out a letter for level funding, with the exception of contractual obligations.
Level funding or level services?
Level funding.
All right, I have a second motion.
I, I, okay. I don't think that's a good idea. I think the problem is, as you level fund and insurance costs rise and union labor costs rise, you're cutting everything else out of their budget as they have to fund those items.
To be clear, I said with the exception of contractual obligations, so that would cut...
Correct, but what I'm saying is it doesn't, doesn't leave for any leeway for increases in those other budgets. Okay, we have a motion or a second though? Move the question. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
I am opposed. All right, discuss the West Bridgewater branding logo. David?
Yes. Okay, so next on the list is, in reference to branding of the town. We started this, and so what I want to do is I want to give an update to the board as to where we are, what we've accomplished, what I have in the short term, and then we need to finalize exactly what we're going to do with the logo. So first things first, I want to say that I'm proud of the fact that we've started to incorporate our town colors throughout the town. One is, is that as you know, up here on the top floor, we've included our maroon and white, and we've made sure that that has become prominent colors throughout the upstairs. We've also, our street signs, the center of town, it is maroon and white, and then we've, the board has also supported the fact that all other street signs will then be white with maroon. I think the clash looks really nice. It looks professional, but again, it stays true to what our town colors are. We've incorporated the new color scheme into all of our, it says sidewalks, but I was referring to our crosswalks. And we are also going to be using pins in the future, the, to commemorate elected officials, and we're looking to try to use maroon and white as the main color scheme with those as well. What I would like to do in the short term is that when you look out into the hallway, you'll see your nameplates, which are Selectmen's Room or Town Accountant's Room. They're all brown with white. Basically, they really is a 1970s scheme. So what I'm hoping to do this year is to be able to revamp those and use those as maroon and white as well. It won't be expensive, be a nice, easy fix, but it will be, it will be consistent with the rest of the town colors. And I'm also, as we go further into the budget season of FY18, if money becomes available, I'm going to ask the board that we be able to earmark that money so we can take this same color scheme and do it downstairs. I will be very honest with you. It is frustrating to me as an employee and as a, as your chief administrative officer of the town, when I walk downstairs and I can tell that these, this building hasn't been painted in probably a decade. I'm concerned about the budget message of being level funded, and the reason being is because under that scenario, that means we should not even be painting a room, if we didn't paint it the previous year. And it is times that we do have an economic upturn that we have to make reinvestments into our properties because there will be times that we cannot do it. And I, what I always ask people to do is to take a look at your personal primary residence. If you said, I'm making this amount of money, I'm never going to spend money on the house, that all sounds fantastic, and four, six, 10 years later, now all of a sudden, the doors need to be replaced, the windows need to be replaced, the boiler needs to go, and you certainly have no money for it because you waited too long to make those reinvestments. So with that said, I'm hoping to be able to make a reinvestment into this building so that we can color coordinate the top floor with the bottom floor. I'm not looking for additional funds. I'm looking, as we've done in the past, is to be able to find funds so that way we're not affecting negatively the tax rate. We did it up here. We were able to squeeze some budgets to do that. I'm hoping to be able to do that this year as well.
David, I think that also stands true with things like the forestry department's budget. The playground was in really far disrepair because it was never allowed money in his operating budget because we kept saying levels, level funded, level funded, level funded. And if we were at a line item that were never funded before, then he's not allowed to put it in the budget. We just had a special, special fund set aside for the playground. But really, it should be a larger maintenance item, and especially as the playground gets older. It deteriorates fast and then becomes more and more problems. So those, those are the types of things that should be maintained and take care of that I don't think are currently in the budget.
Well, I'll give you a really good example. In a couple of months, we're all gonna be even warmer in here than we are now, and we can't use this thing because you can't hear. But under a level funded budget, I can't replace it. Now we're gonna hit a recession in a year, two, three, four, we won't have the money. So, you know, that's my concern, is that these are the times, again, we have raised at one and a half percent or lower every year that I've been here. For Principal Assessor John Donahue referred to it earlier, is that we are now $1.5 million below what our levy capacity is. And that is verification and proof that we have not raised it two and a half. And just as a metric, when I came here, you were $3,000 below that. $3,000 to $1.5 million in just four and a half years, because we've paid attention to the budgets. But yet, we have still reinvested into this building, and we have reinvested into our people. And I'm hoping that we're gonna be able to continue to do that. So part of my mission with our color scheme and our branding is affect that I'm hoping to be able to paint downstairs. So we'll see. I gotta, I gotta verify that we have the money for it. However, there are discussion points that I'm gonna need some leadership and some guidance from, on you. For example, should all townwide letterhead email business cards incorporate maroon and white? Your immediate answer is, why not? But let me provide some examples. You cannot find a fire department in the state of Massachusetts that doesn't use red letterhead. You can't find a police department that doesn't use blue, because those colors have always been branded for police and fire. So I've reached out to the chiefs, and the chiefs haven't really come to a conclusion as to what they would like to do. They're certainly married to their respective colors, and I don't blame them. But that's because that's the way it's always been. Another one, should town vehicles and all departments incorporate these colors? Be very, very expensive. Not necessarily saying that we should do it, but I think that if we're not going to do it, it shouldn't be Dave Gagging just making that decision. But you know, each car would cost us $4,000, so that's just terribly expensive. You can't actually get it painted at the factory, because we're gonna do a maroon and white, and if this year we order a new police cruiser, we always order Fords. Ford may not offer a maroon color scheme. They may offer red, they may offer off-red, but not necessarily maroon. And even if they did offer maroon over the next three years, those color schemes of maroon may be a little bit different. And again, the best example of that is a current forestry vehicle. We purchased it last year. I saw it from a distance. I got a little upset because I thought we ordered black. I wasn't happy about it. I walked up to it, and when I stood next to it, I noticed that it was green, but it was dark green. And why? Because Ford only offered dark green as their version of green for that, for that year. So, again, I'm not saying that we should do this, but again, I think it's just something that this board should weigh into. Should uniforms be maroon and white? Again, I'm not referring to police and fire, but I'm talking, for example, our highway department. You know, they go out right now, they wearing yellow. They're doing it from a safety standpoint. I think that makes a lot of sense. I'm A-OK with remaining them in yellow, but I don't want to be the one to ultimately make that decision. I think that this board should. The one that I've struggled with is that we use our town seal on our letterhead. We do it on, incorporate on our cars. No issues with that. But if we're going to create a logo, which we're gonna show you in a second, if we're going to utilize a logo, should that be in place of the seal? Should that be, the seal should only be used in certain places? And in addition to that, maybe we have the seal in the logo on the letterhead in each respective corner, but does that get too cluttery? Again, I'm just looking for some direction. And, and so, and the last is, is that we had come up with a tagline, but there was discussion about incorporating the live, learn, play, and work tagline, but as we played around with it, it became a little bit cluttery. So for example, this is the logo that we were looking at. You know, again, we incorporate WB for West Bridgewater when it was established, and we had, after looking at about 12 different taglines, we came up with this tagline. We certainly can change it because ultimately, it's your vote. You had discussed, the last time we discussed it, of incorporating live, learn, live, learn, work, and play inside. And as we played around with it, there just wasn't enough room. We talked about actually maybe putting it around the outside, but again, it became too cluttery. And of course, we can get rid of this tagline and actually, and just have live, learn up top and work and play on the bottom and get rid of the small-town charm, big-town opportunities. But again, it's, it's really for you guys to decide and weigh in on. And obviously, this is part of our branding. We don't need a decision tonight, but I want to present the information to you. We can talk about it unless there's certain answers that you know. For example, you don't want to paint all your cars. That was an easy one to probably cross off the list. But I would like to be able to start moving on branding the town going forward.
So what would this be used for?
Really?
So in place of the logo in some things, or?
Well, that's the question that I want to ask you. We had had this conversation a year ago where we incorporate, for example, I had made a better, I had made a different presentation about why entities brand. You know, why it is that the Red Sox, we all know it's a baseball team, but we all know that if we saw two Red Sox next to each other, it's automatically Boston Red Sox. You see a town seal, you don't automatically think it's West Bridgewater, because every town has a seal. But if you see this logo, you may automatically eventually associate it with West Bridgewater. So if you don't want to use a new logo, we don't have to. We could just use the town seal, and we could just continue to incorporate maroon and white. If you like the idea of using the town seal only in specific areas and using the logo in a different area, then that's the guidance that I'm looking for.
Anything else? I think this is just a presentation for us to recap, is a recap really, of a year ago.
Yes, some of it is. The, the only difference is, is that obviously, we have made some attempts in the color scheme. And we've made some of those throughout the course of the year. And again, as long as we have the money, I'm hoping to be able to further that next year downstairs. Next one is in reference to an anniversary retirement event. So, Selectman Lawrence asked me as to whether or not I could look at the possibility of the town holding an annual appreciation and retirement event.
David, I could just back up. This was, each Selectman set goals for the administrator. Just pointed out because someone said our goals were kind of easy and frivolous. Each and every day, we deliver goals to our entire staff, if it's the highway department, forestry department. And we've always had goals that we bring up to buying a golf course. That wasn't in your contract. That wasn't day-to-day operation or something that's, you know, you expect the Selectman to tell you to do, but you do it. And this was, to me, something that was above and beyond the call of duty. That's something that is good for the town, that perhaps we wouldn't normally do on a day-to-day basis. And it's, to say that the goals were simple or frivolous, each and every day, we challenge our staff with tasks. If it's to rebuild the revolving fund, or, I mean, it's, this isn't what your, what your, what your performance is based on. This is a simple goal that we'd like to see implemented within the year.
So with that said, I've reached out to other departments. So what we would be doing is we'd be looking at having an annual event. We're looking at probably October, November timeframe. And I'm proposing a Thursday night. Truthfully, the school superintendent is not sure about a Thursday night. She would rather do it in the morning because she wants to make sure that our staff is there. But if you're going to have a retirement party, family can't attend on a Tuesday morning.
And I look really silly drinking.
So with that said, I, when you look at our calendar, October, November is actually a pretty busy time of the year, but most of our meetings are on Tuesdays and Wednesday nights. Monday nights and Thursday nights get a little bit more sparse. But Monday nights, a lot of times, you may run into a holiday, for example. So that's why I was choosing Thursday evening. At that point, the way I would envision it is that we would hold the event, and first, we would honor people that have been with the town for a period of years. I am proposing the following, is that we look at it one year, five year, 10 year, and 25 years. When I was in the private sector, we had a similar event to this. And what we did, we gave out pins, and it had different colors to it. So that way, people, as soon as you looked at it, you could automatically designate as to how many years they had been with the town. So I would be proposing that. Truthfully, pins are actually not that expensive. However, the one item that I would say is, is that the 25 years, because it's a long time, we would, I would say that we would do it as a platinum pin, and we would also add a nice little additional element to it, which I'll show you in a second. What the thought process was, is that a department head could pin the employee. Department heads would be pinned by the town administrator, and if the town administrator fell into one of those categories, then the chairman of the board would do it. I would like to see school employees and the water employees participate as well, and they would have their respective management structure do it for them. So for example, if it was the water superintendent, it would be the chairman of the water department that would do it. Then what, we would continue on that. We would also honor our retirees. So, right now, the problem is, is that most people retire in June or the end of the year. Um, so right now, the problem is, is that most people retire in June or the end of the year. And the reason for that is because they want to retire at the end of the fiscal year or they want to retire at the end of the calendar year. So again, that's why I think October, November plays pretty well because we will already know of everybody who has retired during the course of the year. And anybody that's retiring in December normally has given us enough notice so that we know at that time of the year. Um, so we would honor all the retirees at that time. And then at that point, what I would think is, is that we could give a town a West Bridgewater pin with a ruby in it, which again, I'll show you just in a second, because in my opinion, you know, it's, it's an extra little thank you. And ruby being red commemorates the, our town colors most closely to any other gemstone that is available. And looking at some of the venues that would be available, if we're going to have a larger crowd, because let's assume that you're going to have eight, ten, twelve people you would commemorate, we could look at the canoe club or we could look at Barrett's. They both have function halls. And if we were to look at something that was smaller, because we might only have a couple of people, we could look at West Bridgewater Country Club. Um, since we own it, we could use their, um, we could use their facility in, at the October, November timeframe. We would also have the availability of the patio outdoors. It shouldn't be that cold and, um, and their, their pro- their, uh, season is winding down. From a budget standpoint, again, we're kind of just taking a ballpark guess, but I'm figuring maybe about a thousand dollars is that if we want to have some music, um, you would have some type of food, uh, soft drinks. There would be a cash bar. Obviously, that would not be included as part of the thousand dollars. Uh, there would be a cash bar there that people would have to pay for out of pocket. Uh, and, um, I would just incorporate that into the board of selectmen's budget. Oh, and then the last was, this was the ruby that, um, a ruby pin that I was talking about. Um, they have some other language that is on there, but again, something like that is not terribly expensive. And I think it would be close if, I would rather make the pin, uh, platinum as opposed to gold, but whatever. Um, but I like the fact of having a ruby in it and again, incorporating the town colors into it.
Great. Thank you very much, David. And, uh, we are, um, this is just a tentative plan. And of course, the, we need to see how many employees we have at what stage in employment and, and whatnot and. I think it'll be great and, uh, really build some loyalty and get a little extra from our employees, letting them know they're appreciated. And this coincides with our, uh, I know you said it earlier. Um, we voted a couple of meetings ago that all town employees, all town elected officials will receive a, uh, a town seal and, uh, we're changing the outer rim to be a maroon rim. And each year during election time, newly elected, uh, board members will receive a, a pin and those will be exclusively for elected officials that serve the town.
Yep.
Um, the next two items on my agenda is just in reference to the use of town grounds. One is in reference to the gazebo at Town Hall Park. That is the Laura Wells request. And Sarah Olivieri is use, looking to, uh, use the transvestation for their Spanish canning, which they do on an annual basis. I've already signed both, but again, according to the policy, providing the information to you and the board. Um, and with that said, that's the end of my report.
David, um, I don't want to bring this, I do want to bring it up, but I, at our last town meeting, uh, one of the water superintendents said there was dire need for funds for projects that weren't funded. And, uh, they were appalled that they weren't notified, which we know they were. Um, have we received anything? Because I want to make sure if these projects are, are crucial for their department, that we move forward in whatever steps it takes to assist them, but we haven't heard anything, uh, or nothing in writing to us about requesting a town meeting or that the, what the funds were needed for or anything so we can help them. Um, I think we're all here to make sure every department succeeds. Uh, that shows with us reaching out to the schools. It's a separate department, separate budget, separate elected boards. I think this board and our office is always there to make sure everybody succeeds, but we haven't heard anything. And if those projects were so important, I, I want to get them going.
Yeah, so, uh, you're absolutely right. At that time, we had not heard anything and I had not received anything. However, over the past week, I have received some of their articles. I'm told there'll be one or two more. And I've already informed them that if they want to have a special town meeting, that we will, we can have one in the spring. I'll bring it back to the board, and I reiterated that they would not have to pay for it.
Great. Thank you very much. Just want to make sure everyone's where they need to be. All right, anything else?
Jared, do you want to go back to the budget message? Because I'm not, we didn't really discuss it much.
Okay, we can go back to that.
So I guess the spirit of why I, um, made that motion was, I feel like in the past, we've asked for a level service budget. We haven't received a level service budget. We've received an increased service budget. And it's almost like it's a negotiation where it really should be every department head sharpening their pencil. And I've found that it's been the complete opposite with some departments. I know specifically the school last year. I forget what the percentage was. I want to say something like six percent they originally asked for an increase for. And when it came time to decrease it, I think we landed on something like three. And you asked them to find, I forget the number, two hundred grand, and they said, okay, not a problem. Like it was nothing. So I guess I'm just a little bit annoyed with that. And they're not the only ones. Um, I just chose them because they're the biggest. But it just happens too frequently that the departments take the opposite approach than they should.
Right. And it's usually the same departments. I agree with it. I, I agree with you, but I also don't want to handicap those that do do everything that we ask them.
It doesn't mean that that's what we have to land on as a budget. That's just what we're asking for.
Anthony, you have anything further?
No.
So, uh, I would like to make a motion. We change the message to be a level service. Um, and of course, any big changes can be added through the, um, capital budget process. But, um, I don't feel that there's a, a wish to go along with that change, but I'll make the motion. All right, there's not a second, so we move on. Thank you, Anthony. All right, anything else to come before the board? Okay, we are going to go into executive session, but we are going to return, uh, as chair. Let's see. I'm all over the place. Uh, I would entertain a motion to enter into executive session. We will reconvene to open session, discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining, uh, specifically the public works, water department union, and the police union. Since in my opinion as chair, deliberating an open session would have a detrimental effect on the bargaining position of the town. Requires roll call vote.
Harare, yes.
Ken Han, yes.
Lawrence, yes. We are now in executive session. We will reconvene. Reconvene into open session. Oh, you all said? Okay. Uh, we're reconvening back into, uh, open session, uh, following deliberation on the public works and water union, along with the police union. After thoughtful discussion, a thorough discussion with the, the board and our administrator, uh, we will, uh, vote to ratify the contract for the public works and water union, along with the police union. Uh, I'd like to thank, uh, David and, uh, the staff for the great work. Uh, we're able to, uh, compensate our town employees that we appreciate they work hard every day well. And at the same time, uh, we are able to get some of the, uh, long, long time issues back under control uh, with alleviating sick time buyback and, uh, some other benefits to all new hires. Eventually, uh, this will work through the system and, uh, I thank you for, for the great work. It's not just a give, 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 and it's, it's good that the town's getting some of the stuff back that's been problematic and will, uh, stop the, stop the bleeding, if you will. And, uh, going forward, I think we're gonna be in, uh, even better condition than we already are. And again, uh, I will entertain a motion to sign the contract.
So.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
David, is there anything else we need to do?
No, I, I guess all I would do, I know you're signing it, but I would just take an official vote that you're ratifying the, the contracts.
Okay. Motion to ratify the contract for the West Bridgewater Police Department.
Second.
Motion is second. All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. Motion to ratify the contract for the Department of Public Works and Water Department.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Is there anything else to come before the board this evening?
We got this, this consolation thing there that, I guess it takes two signatures or whatever it is.
Yep, it's already done. I don't know where the rest of it is.
It's got two signatures?
Yeah, Tracy has it.
Here and let Tracy find it. Okay, do I have a motion to adjourn?
Come on.
Second.
Further? All of us in favor?
Aye. Pass this over to Anthony there.